Well, good evening, everybody. Before we get started, I just wanted to introduce someone who might be a new face in the room. Graciela Walker is our vice principal. You've read her resume, you may have seen her outside the school, but she's here and we're excited to have you. So Madam Chair, whenever you're ready, I think you can call us to order. Maho Moose and David Estrada. I'm sorry, David, you can't quite second. No, you're in the land of pending. And David Duak, seconds. And then I think you want to have a vote. Thank you. So we'll move into a few updates. I want to also welcome all of our attendees. We have four attendees on the line tonight. And we'll do some question and answers at the end of our meeting as we typically do. Thank you all for making it here, just almost into the holidays. I think I speak for our team when we say we're feeling energized, we're feeling a bit tired. We're looking forward to a break, but we also are really proud of a lot of good work that's going on in the building. So I've shared some written updates by email before this meeting, but just a few things to underscore and emphasize. We always check in on our enrollment, which has been a challenge this year. Our enrollment has ticked up a little from 96% to 97%. However, we still have some seats open in kindergarten and second grade. Right now, we don't have seats available in first. And so that's good, and that helps with the finances that we'll talk about a little bit later. Academically, when we last met a month ago, we talked about Joanna and we talked about Graciela joining our team, and we reviewed that very long list of frameworks that were being rolled out instructionally. So this is a, this is an incomplete list, but I would love to ask Principal Undohar to sort of say a few words about how the last month has been going.
Yeah, so in the last round, we have continued to coach teachers on the 90-day instructional trajectory. On January 3rd would be our checkpoint for the Phase 1, which is 30 days. Some teachers have mastered Phase 1, some teachers have not mastered, and we expected that because all teachers grow at different rates. So we will be having our checkpoint all day PD on January 3rd, providing our trajectory, and also the CEP planning, the Rule Lesson Plan framework. What we have learned is that there's still gaps in intellectual preparation. So that's going to be a big focus in Phase 2 of the work on Taking Lead to Excellence. So we are going to engage teachers in a protocol of what intellectual preparation looks like, what are they thinking about when they're planning, and really diving into that intellectual prep that then will allow them to really not only master the instructional practices, but our goal is to get to rigor. And then faster step, we're really, really excited about the goal that we set for STEP. So in the past, it took four weeks to finish the English and Spanish on STEP administration. English, we finished in a week, and Spanish took us about a week and a half. Spanish, we learned that it takes longer, so that, you know, I've never, this is my first experience administering STEP in Spanish. So we do know that that is approximately how long it takes, about a week and a half. And then there's a lot of work, and it's not on the list, but there's a lot of work around leader development as well. And I guess I definitely was supporting leaders at the VP level, but not the way I'm supporting them at the principal level. And they, they need a lot of support, so we've, I've been providing a lot of support around protocols, data meeting protocols, you know, facilitation skills, and just so much that it takes to really be an effective leader. So I've been doing a lot of work around that, and that's why I'm so grateful to have Graciela, because, you know, the, there's so many areas to work on, but the student, the Department of Student Support consists of RTI, Response to Behavior, Response to Incident Study, and, you know, the social work that Kalina provides for our kids. And there's so many systems to create in the Department of Student Services, the Student Support. So she has taken that on, and we check in periodically throughout the day, multiple times a day. We check in at the end of the day, so there are very clear goals and systems that are being created in our Department of Student Services. So she's taken on that big project while I'm like really digging deep into supporting leaders. So that's, that's the work that we're engaging in every day.
So maybe that's a good way to segue. So Graciela, we've had these systems, we've budgeted for them, we've had professionals working in them. But I hear Joanna saying, you know, we need, we need real systems, right? So this is about not just delivering and not just being in compliance, but it is about that, but it's also about moving kids, right? And this being an effective use of all the effort that we're putting in. Can you kind of talk about that work a little bit?
At a very individualized level of support. Beginning January 3rd, we are going to conduct a professional development to launch our Tier 2 intervention for both instruction and behavior. Where with this new step round, we had the ability to collect and analyze all of the data in order to select who our students will be that will be part of our multi-tiered system in order to receive Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions. The goal always is to reduce the number of behaviors that exist and to reduce the number of referrals to special education, ultimately through intensive, individualized intervention and support. So we will be working with classroom teachers to create and support them around and working in partnership with the teams as well to create Tier 2 interventions that are utilized within the classroom. And then we now have created a new multi-tiered system team with all of our interventionists who are working collaboratively with leadership to select the scholars and to determine which interventions we're going to be providing and is very systematic, through a systematic approach, which was not present prior. So the teachers are extremely excited to be part of this and to have the opportunity to have a fully functioning multi-tiered system of support. And they share their hopes and dreams with us during our kickoff meeting last week on Wednesday. And this week, we start the work of getting those systems up and running.
The only thing I want to add there for those of us who are not education professionals is when we talk about, when we talk about tiers, right? We're talking about sort of a roughly three tiers of intensity of services. So Tier 1 would be the whole classroom, right? Tier 3 would be pulling out an individual or pulling out a small group, and Tier 2 would be sort of within the classroom, but it's kind of differentiating. And so the idea is, as we identify students' needs, we're tracking the data, we're getting them services at the appropriate tier, but always with an eye towards, you know, getting them back into the least restrictive environment. Did I do okay?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, and that's, and that's been true, English, Spanish. Thank you. Other questions on academics? Might have to hang up our phone. Say something else about academics.
We're extending the timelines that exist in terms of special education services and support that our Director of Student Services is providing to teachers. So now we are moving to providing intensive coaching to IACT teachers in supporting special education as well. We had an outstanding IMP meeting where we had a student who was able to successfully reduce the amount of services that he's being provided. And that's the type of success that we want to see with all of our students with IEPs, is we want to see that the support that they're receiving is adequate enough to helping them meet and attain their annual goals, which will then ultimately, again, continue them on that special education, continue them to the least restrictive environment.
About 18%. Lightly. Yeah. If you adjust.
But we have two issues that we drive, right? There's behavioral and educational. And so we need to, from my non-educational perspective, right? In my mind, it's like you need to eliminate behavioral issues in the classroom for educational things to continue. But then also those kids who have behavioral issues, you know, are not being educated, right? Then they're just being behavioring, drained or tamed or... Is there a nice word for that? Well, I'm wondering what the, what is really the structure of intervention? I mean, there's a fear of kids who are, you know, being treated as stuff. What does that look like for their day? And I know that's a big question because I'm not an educator. Assuming that the big goal is to have everyone learning at the same level, how are we trying to achieve that? And, and I guess what I also don't want to forget is that while we're meeting on this side of people who need help, like, is there anything happening for children that's really on itself? Do we have a counterpoint to that?
Do you want to say a couple of words about RTB or?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, like you said, a big question is a great question. And I think that what Graciela did was I give you like the long gist, right, of what we're doing. But like Michael said, within those tiers, kids, there's kids that are disruptive in the classroom, right? Those kids may fall in Tier 2 or Tier 3. So what does Tier 2 and Tier 3 look like proactively? Because we are a responsive classroom school and we're proactive. So there are interventions that we put in place for these students. One of our, our programs that we're launching in the week of January 3rd is, is called Chico, Check-In/Check-Out. So these kids have a buddy, you know, which is a staff member, but it can't be their teacher, that checks in with them in the morning, checks in with them in the afternoon and in between if possible, and they have goals, and they have incentives to motivate them to meet those behavioral goals. So within those tiers, there is a system and there is interventions to provide, you know, to provide the kids that fall in those categories. Also, the 90, the 90, the 90-day instructional trajectory, there's a trajectory for management and there's a trajectory for rigor. So our goal is that our kid, our teachers master these instructional practices that will support them to sustain those students in the classroom. No, no, and it's true, like, like we talk about this all the time, like, that we have ultimate goals. Like, we have these big goals, but it's, it's, we have to have these milestones. There is, there is a lot of work to do. And I think Emily knows how I, how I am too, like, you know, I want to get to our goals like right away, but that's not realistic. You know, I had a conversation with Michael not too long ago, and I'm like, if I would have approached my role the way I wanted to, then teachers are going to run out the building, right? So I, I need to, you know, we need to be realistic and say, this is where we are, and what are our milestones to get there? And right now, it's really systems and that we're progress monitoring and development, and starting from the leaders, right? There, there is a lot of development to make at the leader level.
And I also just wanted to touch upon, all students with IEPs don't necessarily fall into Tier 2 and Tier 3 in need of that type of level of support. Children have IEPs for various classification reasons. So there are times that those children do not display any behaviors, and their disability is primarily focused on instruction. So then those children will receive an individualized plan that focuses solely on the instructional support that that child would receive. So again, everything is balanced based on the individual child and what the needs are that they present. You can visit us in, in March after we pack the system.
I'll have a lot of sandwiches between now and then. Oh, very good. I, I know that as the weather turns, COVID is on everybody's mind. So I'll just share a few pieces, I'll probably start with the latter point here. So we continue to do weekly testing and communication about that. I can't say that our group of volunteers has grown very much since we last met, so that's going to continue to be a point of communication. Yeah. We have... Yeah, but it's, it's also been, I don't know, a, a busy time in general in the school. So I think with the new year, it'll be one more point of sort of resetting to invite, invite more families to do that. We're also doing some incentives, which I don't want to spoil them, but we're going to do some recognition for the families that have been involved here and the kids, and tie that to our core virtue of courage. So try to sort of generate some interest around, you know, participating there. We've had a total of three positive cases to date. Unfortunately, a couple of them became known to us with results that came in right after our winter concert. So even though we really made an effort to keep kids in their classroom groups at that event, we felt like we owed it to all families to let them know, because one, one case was in the first show and one was in the second show. So eventually, everybody in the school got a notice that your child may have been exposed, and so you may want to get a test. So we've talked through with some individual families who had concerns about that. We do encourage everybody to get a test. But, you know, we also, I, I don't regret the, the steps we took, including requiring a negative test or, or a vac, proof of vaccination at the door, having the students wear masks and so forth. But, you know, we're all hoping to get through the end of this week and hopefully no more reports of anything like that. It's also flu season, so, you know, there's, there's everything kind of going around and the weather's getting colder. But so far, we, we seem to be doing okay. It was unfortunate, but, you know, if you go for a test that has a two-day delay, or even with our, with our in-house tests, you know, we don't get all the results immediately. And so sometimes that, that delay can just mean that, oh yeah, the student had participated in something at the school. Grand total of three positive cases so far to date. There is, you know, we report this daily to the state, they have a dashboard. The, the data on the dashboard is usually about a week old, but you can go on and see we've, we're still in the, in the low numbers, but continuing to take precautions. I don't have that information. Yeah. No. Yeah. To ask whether students have been vaccinated or not? Yeah. Yeah.
Just to have the numbers.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll check into that, yeah, definitely. Yeah. Yeah. We will, we will likely do, yeah, we will likely do a mid-year survey, so, which, which is often anonymous, so that would be one way to collect it, so we get a barometer of that. Yeah. No, I think, I think it's a fair question and it'd be a good point.
But we also know that there were quite a few who thought that, yeah. And there was, there was an event here at the school, and, you know.
Right.
There was also a similar.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe others kind of already had it.
Yeah. Um. Okay, yeah, I think that's good feedback. We have, we discontinued the use of temperature checks. Temperature checks were, are no longer recommended by any of our health authorities. Our experience was that they were also not very useful. We weren't, we weren't finding very many symptoms that way. And so because it's a hassle and we had some parents who were concerned about it or complained about it, we figured, you know what, we don't actually really have a good reason for this. It felt like an abundance of caution at the time, we certainly did it through all last year, but we decided to phase that out, just in the spirit of, you know, following the evidence and following the, the guidance that we have. It doesn't look right now as if the, the soon-to-be-new mayor will be advocating to change mask requirements, but he's talked about that in the past, so we'll see if that brings any changes. I have asked our team, and I'll ask all of you for your, your feedback, but I worry about the developmental impact of kids being masked all day long. And so when we have the, the advantage of having kids be able to go outside and run around at recess, one thing I think we're going to look at is can we go without the mask during that time? Get some fresh air, see some smiles. Naturally, we would build in options for kids and families, and I can't tell you if it's logistically feasible, because I haven't gotten all the input from the staff yet, but I want you to know, that's one thing that we're kind of thinking about, is as long as we're outside, can we give the kids a, like a long mask break at recess? Are you doing that at, at your schools? Not yet. But it may not be up to you. Yeah. I feel the same way as a parent. Yeah. Yeah. All right, so we'll be gathering feedback from stakeholders on that. I did get a note from one of our attendees, it's that it's kind of difficult to hear all the voices in the room, so I think I'm going to... Okay, and I will try to reiterate, for those of you listening in, we, we're going to try to improve the audio quality for everyone. Sorry about that. So we also have some updates, but they relate to real estate, which is one of the allowable topics for an executive session. So I think we will hold those, since those are sensitive business matters affecting the school. That concludes my updates for this month. Okay? Thank you. Bob, can you hear us?
I can.
If you would like to, please run us through the, this month's reports.
Sure. By way of financial reports, Michael circulated the materials earlier today, and the finance committee met last night. So as of the end of November, the school's year-to-date surplus was $111,000, with $3.6 million in revenue against $3.5... with three point six million dollars in revenue against, uh, three point four eight million dollars in total expenses. Uh, we are forecasting an annual surplus of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars uh, versus a budgeted surplus of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So while that may be a decrease, uh, we are actually forecasting an increase of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars when compared against last month. Uh, the primary driver of this was our per pupil enrollment actually increased six students. Uh, it was three hundred and eleven scholars last month and, uh, as of the January per pupil invoice, we are reporting three hundred and seventeen students. So we, in the event that we do have any budget shortfalls.
David respectfully requests that you always use the word scholars. I, if I, if I had to guess, I would say Bob's clients all have different nomenclature, but.
We do. I use them interchangeably, but it can be scholars going forward. Absolutely.
We're, we're just pulling your leg, Bob. Please continue.
Lovely. All right. Um, so no real material changes, I think, on the expense side. Just on staffing, we are projecting savings of about seventy-seven thousand dollars annualized. Uh, and that's the result of our carrying some vacant positions, uh, some late hires and then some key staffing changes, which have been discussed at previous meetings. Um, a little bit of a pain point, just so the board is aware, uh, has just been cash flow. Uh, the primary driver of this honestly is the state grants department is just very overwhelmed with the number of federal grants that they have to, uh, review, approve, and then ultimately pay. Uh, so year-to-date, we've received about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars against a budgeted amount of almost, almost a million. So, you know, since we're approaching halfway through the year and only having received a little bit more than maybe fifteen percent of our allocation, uh, we are waiting on the state to release some funds. Uh, Michael and I have been pressing. We did receive some good news that to, a little bit more than two hundred thousand dollars of that nine hundred and ninety K, uh, will be released in the quote next few weeks. Just looking at the balance sheet quickly, uh, we closed November with four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars cash on hand with a little bit more than three hundred thousand dollars in accounts receivable. Again, we've been accruing that grant revenue and we're just waiting on the state. No other real material changes, I think, to the balance sheets. Our ratios, uh, do look pretty good, uh, absent of the crazy capital lease liabilities and assets that we were obligated to carry as a result of our audit. Uh, but our current ratio, total margin and debt-to-asset ratio, kind of excluding that capital lease, uh, all meet the state education department's requirements. Uh, and the day's cash is just very cyclical, I think, with the timing of our per pupil payments. Uh, so no real material changes. Michael and I, uh, are planning on getting together after we resume from holiday break, uh, considering we'll be halfway through the school year, uh, to reforecast any other than personnel expenses, uh, that we have on the books, uh, where, and identify any areas of cost savings.
Questions?
It really like, obviously the the good points out of that, what's your oral matters of time? So we save money because we haven't hired people or because they left earlier than we expected. That's a question of timing, short-term, that works in our favor. The longer-term items have all sort of played a little bit against us and only in terms of cash flow, which is fortunate because that means they will eventually come home to roost, but they haven't yet. So even though we expect nine hundred and some odd, I believe ninety-six thousand dollars from the state education department, we so far received something in the low hundreds. And, uh, even though they promised us a little two hundred thousand dollar check, that's certainly not close to half the money they owe us in twelve months they're supposed to pay it. So I ask Bob again, if I was going to indicate that we don't expect, we'll even get the nine hundred and ninety in this year, even though we expect we'll, we'll get it, it will probably be in July or August by the time we really account all of that money. So that means that we have to be careful about how we spend cash. The, the, the timing of the, um, of the ratios is, is also an unfortunate problem, especially if the day is cash. It's always going to happen in a November, December month, because we're waiting for a payment. So we're going to be low on cash until that payment comes in. And in December, it always seems to be later than you want, so it's, it's always will be later than the meeting, since we are meeting up and it looks. So we're, we're not in a good cash position on those days. Unfortunately, the capital leasing is a long-term problem that our accountant put in and I raved in and ranted about last time, so I won't do it again. But like, we will age through that problem. Um, and I expect it'll be one that, you know, if everything else is understandable, that we will not have a problem explaining to any regulatory body because our accounting firm has changed the way that we balance, hasn't, but nothing about the way we did business changed. It was just one day we were in compliance and then one day we were not because of the way we put the numbers on the balance. So that will actually age out, um, in terms of some of the amortization and depreciation catching up with each other properly. Uh, but for the moment, it's going to leave us there probably a year and a half. I think we looked at it more closely, Bob, and I would have some of that. Because we still want to be able to spend money and focus on your job, right? You can't just start porting cash to picture debt-to-asset ratio.
Yeah.
We're not in the business.
Thank you, David.
The six new students a month, that was probably like, it was something that had already been added, they managed to not get.
So actually, we talked about it last night. There, there are some students not only that day back, but also some spent years that have to be adjusted going back. And we talked about how, how, you know, in the weeks they will go into, it sounds like everyone understands that. Eventually it gets covered properly. It just takes a little while, these did it and.
Yeah. Yeah. In addition to the DOE invoices, we have two students from the school district in Long Island, so that's a separate billing process. And so if you ever see a difference there, it's usually those two students.
All right.
So I don't know. Yes. Thank you, Bob. All right. Um, next up would be anything related to board norms and development. I will just share our three pending, um, trustees. Your paperwork was all submitted, right? David's had been before last month's meeting and Alejandro and Melody, since you were voted on the same day, you were both submitted right after last month's meeting when I got all the autographs I was looking for. So thanks to all of you. We wait, we will nudge the, uh, state ed department and, uh, hope that everybody's official by this time next month. Um, we're also, although this isn't related to the board, we're also, um, we've submitted our, our charter revision that you all approved last month. So we'll await their approval on that as well. Please not, 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 not good for your health. Yes. But I don't think we have any other board items. Okay. All right. Um, next up on our agenda is public comments. Um, we welcome all the members of the public. If you're a parent, even better, but any, anybody is welcome to join us and make a comment. What I looks like we have, um, seven attendees tonight. I will ask Joanna to help me prompt in Spanish in the event that we have, uh, only a Spanish speaker. Uh, commenting is not required, but it's certainly welcome. So I'm just going to go in the order in which you appear on my screen. Good evening, uh, Ms. Woods. Would you like to share a comment tonight?
Uh, good evening. Uh, just want to say that, uh, I know you mentioned the winter spectacular and, you know, there was COVID case. Um, but I, it was really amazing to be able to see young people and families come out. Uh, and your specials, uh, teachers, Mrs. Stroza and the others, they did an amazing job, Ms. Chang. And so I just want to say thank you. Um, we had a good time. It was, it was a joyful occasion. So thanks again to the entire, uh, school community.
Thank you. Um, we really appreciate that. Uh, Ms. Hernandez, would you care to offer a comment tonight?
Hola señora Hernandez, tiene una pregunta, un comentario.
Ah, no, porque recién entré, eso no, no escuché toda la conversación.
Okay.
Pero sí quiero darle las gracias por todo lo que están haciendo por los niños, para que los niños se, se mantengan bien en la escuela durante, durante el tiempo que están en la escuela. Eh, muchísimas gracias por todo el esfuerzo que hacen.
Gracias.
Ms. Rosado Bunkley, would you like to share a comment tonight?
Hello, I missed the beginning. Um, I don't know if you guys cover this, but I was wondering when does the lottery, or like applications open for next year? My sister wants to apply.
Oh, great. That's a great question. Um, so we'll be starting applications, uh, in early January.
Okay. I think she already submitted one, but I'll let her know.
But you know, if, if, if she wants to submit now, the first thing she'll do is get a call from our front desk team and they can always put her in the file for next year. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Hope to have her. Thank you so much. Uh, Ms. Clemente, would you like to make a comment tonight?
No, la verdad me, me gust, estoy muy contenta con, como están trabajando en la escuela. Me encantó el espectáculo. Ay, me gustó que poco a poco nos estamos volviendo a reunir para sacar un poco los niños del, de la crisis emocional que ellos están teniendo. Yo soy madre de cinco hijos y no es fácil tener encerrados cinco hijos en un departamento. Y esto es, eh, como el, yo diría que el comienzo de una restauración de lo que vivimos. Me encantó, la verdad. La niña es muy contenta, estaba muy contenta con la escuela.
Gracias. Gracias a ti.
We, we, we welcome all kinds of feedback, but that was a nice Christmas present. Thank you. Señora Pérez, Ms. Pérez, would you like to share a comment tonight?
Señora Pérez tiene una pregunta, un comentario.
Bueno, yo quiero agradecer, eh, el buen trabajo, la buena organización de ustedes y las medidas de seguridad que han tomado. A veces noto que hasta cierto grado están bien aprietos por cuando no se apoyan los arreglos. Pero me encanta ver el duro trabajo de cada uno de ustedes que sin duda ah, hacen posible, hicieron posible que disfrutáramos de ese show. Y sí también veo amigo que están muy contentos, así que yo solo aprecio mucho lo que están haciendo y agradezco de verdad. Solo eso quería mencionar.
No, gracias por esas palabras. Eso me da fortaleza, seguir haciendo el trabajo.
Lo están haciendo excelente. Muchas gracias.
We have two more attendees online. Ms. Alvarez, would you like to share a comment or a question tonight?
Señora Álvarez tiene un comentario, una pregunta.
Looks like not right now. We're glad that you're on the line. Uh, Mr. Or Ms. Figueroa, would you care to comment tonight?
Señora Figueroa tiene un comentario, una pregunta.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for your, for your comments and for joining us tonight. If you're watching this recording later, you can always email the school with any questions that you have or, or give us a call. So I believe that, uh, our next agenda item would be that executive session that we mentioned. So what we would do, since we don't have any, um, trustees participating remotely tonight, I think we can simplify the tech a little bit. I'll just take this machine over, uh, to another room and, uh, but first there would need to be a vote to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing, I think, real estate and just to be safe, I would also mention, uh, personnel matters. Great. So for those of you on the line, um, this concludes the public portion of our meeting. The board will reconvene, but they only expect to vote to adjourn when they come back.
We are back from our executive session.
Great.
Adam Chair.
To adjourn the public meeting. All in favor? Thank you, thank you. Everyone have a wonderful day.
Thank you.